I would really feel like, you know, the neighborly thing to do is to really get up and and talk to your neighbors. And if they're going to be our neighbors, I would like them to make some type of effort, besides just reaching out to our attorney, to be a neighbor. Because there's a lot of us, I've had a lot of neighbors in four months that I never expected to me, because we're all working together as neighbors. I don't feel that from having one next to them. I don't feel like they want to be our neighbors, or they want to make...
Thank you.
Just to respond to the question about fire, I think you know what else? There wasn't a great chance of words about saying in regards to fires or the solar project. What I've heard from other fire departments and projects I've worked on in the past is that if the word of your fire within the solar array, they would, it would be their first decision to go in and stop the fire, because there's not much of a reason to, in most cases. Their first priority is to protect life and homes, and they don't necessarily know a lot about our equipment, because it's insured, and they rather not risk the lives of the firefighters and equipment to go and stop the fire of a project that has, you know, that is not engaging with people's lives, or is not, you know, something that's harmful to people's lives. So, when I said that, that was just in regards to typical fire departments approach to solar panels, whatever, from other fire departments. And I think if the word of your fire in an area, the normal fire response, which probably will be homes and life and property, our project. And in regards to the above seven, the regionality, you know, after some first initial attempts to reach out to those represented by the attorney, having the danger that some would just do not want to talk, and so, given that the above represents, sorry, the attorney represents a group of folks that consciously form together, I tried to respect that by filtering the people who tell me, so that's why I did that, but to provide the option and request that anybody that wants to be the initiator or happy to do that, and like I said, if you did take that back, then others do not.
Thank you, gentlemen. All right, so first of all, just want to thank you guys, and I do appreciate you guys listening to us. I know it's probably tough for you guys, you know, we were chatting back and forth, but I appreciate you listening to us. A couple of things, just to comment on that fire issue, I remember that, I just read on something, it was very...
Could you just give your name for the...
Oh, good, I'm listening to the way you... So, I think the comment was that access to fire was through two tiny little jargon engines, and this happened in a day where a four-wheeled vehicle pulled in and it got stopped for an hour and a month, it's an entire same situation. So, I don't know if the fire chief looked at, you know, I'm not going to be able to put it on my peoples, but they let it stop, and the vehicle didn't leave it there. That was a construction truck that was down there. Anyway, what was I want to make, relates to my house, a lot of people talked about the wells, and one thing I found that sounded this way, about something from the EPA study suggesting, you should check your fire valve immediately if certain conditions apply. And one of the conditions that suggests, if anything has changed significantly in your area, such as any disturbances, new construction, or any of that kind of thing. So, I think all of those apply here, and I don't think I should have to do this, so I think, I'm suggesting that you should be tested before that. One point, the last time I went there, I was bored of going on a couple of different issues. One was something change about, and I left a role up in town, and I say, if something is off, you may have to completely re-drill the valve, which is a $25,000 expense. But I want to get clear, if anything is off, this is a significant expense for anybody in this, this area. The other thing to point out was the well is 15 years old. A well lasts 15 to 25 years, so any disturbance with vibrations, my well is about 100 feet from the actual drilling, and the trucks are going to come by. Any disturbance in the ground can crack the seals, man the hull. I collect that incident happened as 100 feet below me, so what I would suggest is someone expects that thing, make sure it's removed before the site, and they expect it after. If you look, and I'm happy, if it can be revealed again, I'm happy to show you where my wells and how close this is to the shore edge, because I've asked for certain things, about the weight of the trucks, how many trucks are coming by, and what impact might be on my pool surface, as well as my, my well. Let me see, this is, we have, obviously my house cannot sustain, I mentioned that, it's fortified even for my basement level, I don't need to rehash that. The other question I need to make, my kids get on the bus right here, my house is on the line side, and if a medical unit comes in an hour or two, 10 minutes, if you pull up that engine right now, I just want to get this covered, because I don't see the trucks coming out. So, I want to make sure we're agreeing, how many vehicles have been out at one time? I don't want the vehicles coming in and out during school hours.
I am John Mulley from Spies, if you want to hear it. I just want to state that I'm a less concerned name, and I just started by an energy manager. One thing I wanted to point out, it goes to the 8.7 megawatt DC, and then clarify that they're only using 2 megawatts AC. At any time, if something changes in the future, with what's going on, they could ramp down right now by putting maybe 31 inverters, and making that an 8 megawatt AC system. So, that's how it works, by no contravention of that, that's a complete stat. So, we can take this from 1 inverter to 4 down the road, if the state keeps getting more and more pressure with this, and in the sites that may not be residential neighborhood. So, that's something really good to think about, is that it is an 8 megawatt AC potential site, as you said, or maybe 7.6, but it adds that potential just by adding invert. Thank you.
This was not really, that's correct, in terms of lots of structure, so of course we can be limited in terms of how many inverters we can put at the site.
I don't, to a large degree, to us that they were. Couple things, I live right across the street, you don't trust my son, that's what it comes down to, but you really don't, I live right across the street, you know, they said 10 to 15 each week, as they were, is that 10 to 15, because it's a 28 watt. I gotta look at these cell panels every day, every day, for the next 10, if I'm lucky, 15 yardage. It's not right, this whole project is too big to put right in a residential, it's that simple. It's just way too big. Tell them outside, bring out the back, and then 20 years, or even 10 years, what are we planning to develop that plan, so? But we don't trust them, we don't, they still, they don't trust us, but yeah, there's a reason to trust them, to trust them. We've been off a lot of times, lots, 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 lots of times, guys, we know that. No one wants to live in the state in front of their house, no one. There's a thing about the air, or outside, no one wants to live in their house, they're afraid of them. I know you're a boss, but that doesn't mean it's always right. We know that, it's just 24,000 pounds, they park in front of the house, leaving back out. Some of these people wait a hundred feet from it, it's just, it's crazy. You know, God will shut them down, because they get lots of, and you can see their video, they're thinking, it's what you do. So, if you want to call it back, it's what you do. They didn't believe that, they put it in a bomb. They really didn't, that's the truth, and you can't believe this, it's all about money, that's the truth. We understand, people gotta make money anyway they can. Right, you can have, I know you gotta have a tough time, right?
Just to start, regarding the screening, you know, the 10 to 15 years, it came in the question, where did this respond to, how long would it take for the screening to reach the mature life? And that was a general number across the entire project. Again, so lots of times, you know, depending on the particular view, or you screened, you are really needing more, much faster than 10 to 15 years, because the mature life around these trees is much higher than, than relevant to you shots.
Yes, sir. You have a last?
Name please?
Yes, John Swinney, Six Stone Road, Rad, top of Point Street, for those who, I actually bought King Folks Cave. But I was in there, I was saying, and I did to a number of these meetings, and I was just about at a top, but there's a few things that came up during the meeting that were, I think key enough to discuss. One of the four of these gentlemen over here on the left, was fast about the 8.7 megawatts versus the 2 megawatts DC. And I think the point he was trying to get at, was never, never, it never came to fruition, was that, how many DC megawatts do you need to produce 2 AC megawatts? Maybe a 1:1 ratio, or maybe a 1:1, maybe you only need 4 megawatts DC to convert, I think it was a better numbers, a closer numbers of the term, I don't know if there's a formula there. So, a quickest project would be done with 4 megawatts DC to hit the spine program, 2 megawatts basic, which would be less, maybe less issues with vendors, and just pure model view of the law. Corrected or wrong, that was the point we were trying to get to. And on this gentleman, but he made a couple of good points. The other one, what was going on, I guess, I have no idea, mostly towards these folks, and this is a tasty issue, you know, everybody's trying to make a living here, but the, the immediate concept is basically experiment, because there is no data on solar panels over prepared rocks. And to have your first experiment, the 8.7 megawatt over 68 years, is just, I think it's just way too large of an experiment to risk. And I find it very challenging, and I just saw the, yesterday or today, that the UMass program, that is doing stuff for growth and for shade and stuff like that, that the individual from that group actually signed this document, which suggests, you know...
Do you want to wrap that up, because you're kind of...
Yeah, suggests what they're doing, they, you know, experiment one eight for five years to see what the yield is like, because they really don't have anything to base on. I think a lot of the experiments they did were not on criteria type plans. And a quick note on the storm, there was discussion about the human error range, 20 kilohertz to 20, I'll comment, just a second. What we're going to discuss is the other frequency ranges that the air can probably pick up, how that will affect the wildlife, and animal life, including that entire area of course, you know, drainage and so forth, drainage, drying, all that, and so forth. So, that's, if the reason on this that you found, it should just be limited to the humid probably range, it should be, it should be a range that other, you know, other things can be affected by. That's all I'm going to say, thank you.
I just, regardless of anyone doing these questions, you know, one thing, like I said earlier, I think the ability to address the question, the condition that the project needs to have certification as a doing as called, what we do use program, D E R, that would prove that it qualifies on the program. And the other point is just, you know, from, from last fall, I've never separated it other than the production from response is uncertain. What we know is that the vines will be fine, we just do not know how many, what exactly years we are, we are hopeful that it will do well. But if for some reason we do not continue to have an active agricultural operation, it's important to remember that we would, we would be in violation of the D E P guidance that allows us to be on a regular basis to be doing. So, if we no longer, if we no longer have to do agricultural operation, we lack power for doing these programs, if we lack power for doing these programs, we will have to repel on the D E P, and we will be subject to, you know, removal of the project by D E P.
That concludes for tonight, topic of Carroll Farms, unless they're, well, I'll ask the board members for a motion as to how you want to proceed. The options obviously are to continue, close hearing, so again...
Mr. Chairman, if you close the special permit, that's, supposedly on hold, if you close that, they cannot withdraw that. So, if the applicant wants to withdraw that without prejudice, the request to withdraw without prejudice, that should happen before the hearing is closed. Once the hearing is closed, it has to be denied as moot, and then they can't come back to more.
Okay, well, I, frankly, wasn't suggesting that we close it, it's an option, but, but no, that's okay, I just, obviously, that's an option, and if there was a motion to close, there'd be a, some discussion, and I would imagine questioning the applicant as to what they want to do with their original special permit, that could be part of the discussion. But anyway, I will entertain a motion for either continuous or closing.
Do you want to ask the applicant what their preference would be?
Well, I could guess, but...
We would certainly like to suppose that public hearings by the future hearings are not agreed to resolve until they've been productive in five days. This is the 16th tonight, we've been, we're responsible so far, so far, our request would be to have to close, and, you know, guidelines, and if there is, we're still determined to come back to it, if we haven't to yet, but given that there's not much additional information on the light, we would request that we please close the hearing.
If you know, we still have a lot of questions, right? You're seeing a standard eight pages worth.
Two things, when is the next meeting they have, conservation question?
On the 8th.
I'm sure, what's the question I can... My suggestion would be that we continue, this is clearly very sensitive environmentally, so for us to proceed, we deal with the void and the environmental consideration, without hearing anything at all, in terms of the floodplain, we have gotten any real testimony that we can assert or really evaluate, and I would strongly request that we wait until after confirmation, as a change of our most intense or specific requirements in terms of this project, has a great deal of area upon how we can proceed. And secondly, I would like, and I'd ask that whether the board is in agreement, to seek some kind of peer review. We still haven't, I know that we've been communicating with the different engineers, sound engineers, but there's nothing that's been put before us. We've been hearing from different people, on different sides, there's a lot of information, I don't know, it would be inappropriate for us, for us to secure some sound engineer, a proper type of engineer, give us a peer review, and give us some definitive answers to some of the questions we've been asking. I would suggest, don't we continue this, I think if you're leading up, it was an 8th, I don't want to continue for one reading. My suggestion would be, we're at the point now, where we're given, that close to where the Attorney General's position is going to be determined, and there is something else coming up before this, in terms of this amendment. My suggestion would be to postpone until, until after the 17th, until we, and that we would have a better idea of what we're going on, how we're going, and be cautious both here and for the rest of the community.
Do you want to make a motion? Or...
What date would that be, after the 8th?
Sorry, if I'm able to understand.
Sorry, your firm's in the...
Oh, that's okay.
The attorney was looking to...
Do we have...
What do we ask them?
Are you open to my...
No.
No. Go ahead.
I suggest we, we should continue for what would be a week from now.
The next available meeting, yes.
Next available meeting.
16th is our next meeting. I'm sorry, a week ahead than I followed us.
Our second motion.
There's been motion and a second to continue to April 9th, further discussion.
I'm sorry, I stepped over my own, my own thought, I was gonna first motion to see if we can agree to require a peer review on the, by sound engineer to review the materials provided to us, and do a set of recommendations as to the impact on the community.
My question on that would be, would that be a condition? That maybe to town council?
No, no, generally, a peer review is during the application process. I don't know why it wouldn't, it couldn't be the condition, I guess, but it would be hard to change things that come out of the here.
On the issue of peer review in terms of sound, and this is where I get... On the issue of sound, you have a peer review done now that establishes background, that's all on the... If, in fact, once this is up and running, it is under 10 decibels above background, what are our options? As far as I know, there are none. It's in compliance with the law of the land, which is these sound regulations of 10 decibels above background. So, again, no issue with creating a baseline, but what do we use to enforce anything that is under 10, but still is annoying?
When it's old.
Then we have the 10, the D E P regulations.
I think part of our law, relative to special permits, includes a determination whether there's noise that affects the, under 4.6, that affects the neighborhood and the district in which it's in. I think that would be a condition under which we would have the right input conditions in our permit, or deny a special permit when it's required. If it might keep us inside, affecting to megahertz, which so far, no one's been into the line.
So, point of order, there was a motion, I believe, which was seconded, are you still continuing that motion, or are you withdrawing it?
If I could, I'd like to withdraw the motion to continue, and determine whether or not we're going to do a peer review, that being the case, there might be a need for delaying the process further.
Just, just in terms of process, is there a motion to, what is your motion relative to peer review?
I'd like, the motion would be to secure peer review, to, for a sound engineer, to evaluate the effect on the neighbors, as well in terms of decibels, and as well as megahertz.
Is there a second?
I just asked for clarification of what consists of peer reviews, you mentioned a sound engineer, we're expecting sound engineers, the town sound engineer, state, private individual. I kind of, I kind of want more verbiage of what exactly this means, and on a timeline of post 14 days from today, when you have two new members. It's a serious question, you're talking about a whole new planning board, processing, possibly even months from now, to reestablish everything we've talked about since early January, so I kind of want more clarification of what this peer review, or as the motion is all about.
Can I ask that, and this might go to council, but I thought, we discussed last week that we weren't evaluating this proposal under the special permit, just a special permit for floodplain. So, then would the warrant's point about noise not be applicable to our evaluation? Just to clarify, my understanding for the plane was never involved, water damage or detection, was the question? Okay. So, you are correct, right now, all you have in front of you is second hand review. You do not have a special permit in front of you right now.
They have, they have applied for floodplain.
There's, there is floodplain special permit, so then you could, on your floodplain special permit, you would be, you would be analyzing it under that section of our law.
But does sound...
Not, I don't, I can't see the connection, but that's up to you guys.
In terms of procedure, I know during our last hearing, we discussed findings being applied to the special, to the site plan review, would the findings be motioned and voted on after we closed the hearing? Or would any time be an appropriate time for that?
Joe, did you want to...
I'm sorry, I was looking up, I'm sorry, I thought that was the council, and I was looking at something else.
So, with a special permit, and you're zoning by law under site plan review, if
there is also a special permit being contemplated, it connects the two, so we're all, we're under 48, section nine for procedures. And so, once you close the hearing, you have 90 days to issue a decision. So, you can close the hearing, and then contemplate a decision later, you can also close the hearing and direct the planning director on how to present a decision to you, which is what, seems like what you normally do. But you would be deliberating on conditions after the, after the hearing is closed. And again, once the hearing is closed, no testimony can be taken, meaning the applicant cannot submit anything, the abutters cannot submit anything, so, once you close the hearing, you only can evaluate what's in front of you.
And the finding applies to the decision itself, it's not necessarily outside of that.
Correct.
Thank you.
I've been struggling with this for a while now, and I am going to manage to, at some point in this, take off everyone's room, but at least, we have a site plan review that needs to be approved, a site plan application needs to be approved, a special permit. I have perhaps strange thoughts on property rights, I firmly believe that if you buy a piece of property, and you are enamored with the trees on the other side of the events, two words of advice, either take a picture to remember it by, or buy the property. That being said, this needs a site plan approval, and the general statement for purpose under site plan approval has a number of things, but it closes by saying, and that the proposed development is in harmony with the existing neighborhood character, and protects against adverse impacts to joint landowners. Notwithstanding what I just said about property rights, I firmly believe, having walked the area, I've lived in the north all my life, so I know the area, obviously not as well as the neighbors, but I've walked the area... as the neighbors, but I've wandered the area, visited, visited from Fairleigh, from Fuller, and from Bay Road, and I firmly believe that the people that bought property in that area had a reasonable expectation that what they saw was going to be what they were going to continue to see for a number of years. The town changed for whatever reason, the zoning bylaw that may appear for an impossible use possible. I don't think that was fair to the neighbors. So, I personally cannot vote to approve a site plan approval on this. But I just wanted to know where we're coming from. And with that said, I don't know that, you know, sound, sound studies are applicable on site plan review. It's no longer needed a special permit as it once was, special permit under floodplain does not, does not involve itself with noise. So, I guess at this juncture, where we go. I don't know if there's more information that needs to be gathered, because again, it's not going to, it's not going to change, my view, even if there's no sound generated from the site, it's still a use that no one could have anticipated to the property owner, as opposed to some other site that, you know, can be cleared and developed, as is typical in today's society, where property is bought and built. So, again, I don't know where folks want to go, but I'm prepared to deal with this now.
Thank you, Ms. Chen. I'll withdraw my motion and renew my motion just to continue until the eighth. The reason for it, the reason for it, I think the special permit they're seeking is for floodplain, and I think we need to see to get a response from conservation who will take some action. I think it's based on that special permit, it's not a county.
The ninth is, the ninth is a public hearing for the zoning amendment, so perhaps the 16th?
The first of the chair and director.
That's the last meeting before the new board.
Right.
Sixteenth is special. I'm sorry, it's going to be a lot of meetings for everybody, back to back.
Sixteenth, that's fine.
What, sorry, Amy, what's on tonight?
Your public hearing for the, for the special town meeting article.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But would that prohibit any other items from...
You would be having two, you would be having two meetings, but yeah.
Well, that's been the course for the past...
Probably the same people are going to be here anyway.
So, you have an issue, is the issue that people won't be here on the sixteenth?
The second, the same people would be here on the sixteenth.
Then I would continue to the sixteenth.
Joe, I believe the applicant's attorney is at the microphone.
If I may just say, Chair, given, if the board is still inclined to vote disapproved, it would almost be our preference that there was action taken on the application to make that one having come down in three weeks from now for a vote disapproved. I will say to your concern about what the Conservation Commission is meeting, the zoning act is explicit in that zoning is to take priority overall in the matters that include matters that are right by the Conservation Commission. The statute explicitly contemplates that this process will be completely required by a decision by the COMCOM. So, to decide otherwise, to postpone the hearings, the COMCOM is going to have the same view that you have right now. The COMCOM is going to want to hear what you have to say as well before they make a decision. So, we run the risk of just another back and forth, and again, one way or the other. And, sorry, I'm just, I'm trying to find how that is how the statute works. They're going to want to know this board's decision before they take a determination on something that is not discretionary or corporate. So, to the extent that the board is inclined and has reached a decision, I won't put my mind on that. We do not feel that there are more facts that this board can be supporting. We think at this point, all the facts are before the board, for the board to make a decision, and we would love a decision either way, so that we can move forward with the project or with our next steps, if the board is to decline to a project. But we would urge the board to take action sooner than later, because every way is just taking the can further down the road, where all the facts are currently updated before the board.
Yeah, someone's probably noticed I'm not retaking anything down the road, and seeing as how somebody, you know, the chair's already made a decision on this, personally, I think it's probably in best interest to close the hearing at this point. So, I don't know, was there a second on Warren's motion?
There was not a second.
I would close the hearing.
Just, if I could, just procedurally, I'm going to make sure that... There was originally a motion to continue that was withdrawn to discuss, to move, discuss and move on the issue of peer review on sound. To my recollection, that motion to, the peer review was not seconded. The original motion to continue was withdrawn, so I don't believe we have a motion on the floor.
I just made a motion.
All right. Just to be clear, you've made a motion to close the hearing on both the site plan and the public hearing.
Second is special permit.
What did I say?
Site plan special permit.
Site plan and special permit, and before doing that, the original special permit application, do we post the applicant, whether during the open hearing portion of this, whether they seek to have that withdrawn with prejudice or without prejudice? Is that...
Yes.
procedurally?
Yes, if the board is inclined first to withdraw the solar special permit application without prejudice to agree by, in fact, the Attorney General or the town's designing or designing exchange.
All right. Since I didn't recognize a second, I'm going to ask you to hold your original motion to close the hearing and ask for motion to allow the applicant to withdraw their original special permit application without prejudice under the old line.
So moved.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and second to withdraw the original special permit application without prejudice, allow the applicant to withdraw their special permit without prejudice. Further discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous. Now, Steve, if you wanted to make a motion, I should make a step.
Yeah, I move to close the special permit and site plan application.
Public hearing.
Public hearing, yes.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Tim has moved to second of the closure of both the site plan review and the special permit. Hearing that, all in favor, closing both hearings, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's unanimous. All right, we'll take one by one on the issue of site plan review.
We need a motion.
We need a motion.
Right. Someone's got to make, that's why I'm asking for a motion.
By your comment for who?
No, I'm asking for a motion for one versus the other.
Want to add information? Can, I know we can deny the special permit, can we, do we deny a site plan or have just conditions on site plan?
Going on them separately?
No, I'm just asking counsel. Those site plan conditions, it's just conditions, not approval. I'm just questioning whether we can deny the site plan or if we just, because they tie together, a denial of one equals a denial of both?
Site plan review is, it's non-discretionary, so technically, it's, it cannot, it's not, it cannot be denied. However, it's up to this board.
But again, if it's tied together, does the denial of the special permit...
They're not tied together. I mean, I mean, they need both. But if you were so, for example, if you were to approve the special permit and deny site plan review, they appeal site plan review and they win on the appeal, then they have both. So, they're not, it's not going to be one permit.
Okay, so your recommendation is, what kind of action can we take on each one at this point? We can deny the special permit?
Special permit is discretionary.
Okay, what action can we take on the site plan?
Take whatever action this board votes to take, but it is a non-discretionary approval, meaning it's for an as of right use. Now, there are situations where even with an as of right use, it does not comply with site plan, with site plan purposes, objectives, et cetera, that are within the zoning bylaw, and therefore, you would be, in essence, denying it, but basically, you would be saying that the site plan does not meet the requirements of the bylaw.
If I may, Counsel, I would urge the board to consider Counsel's position that site plan review is not discretionary. The Massachusetts Criminal Court has held on numerous occasions that site plan review is non-discretionary. It would be the applicant's preference to work with the board to determine the further conditions implied in the criteria under the site plan section of the bylaw. It would be the applicant's preference to work with the board to reach conditions...
Wait, wait, wait. Our court by rule, we should be speaking. We're speaking about legal terms unless you want them, and we're not a field of court. I suggest you keep your legal finish yourself and allow lawyers to inform us as how best proceed.
If this board were to deny site plan approval and we were to successfully appeal that, the court would order the issuance of a site plan approval without conditions. It is our preference to not go to litigation ground and to instead work with the board and work with the town on a part of conditions in light of criteria of a site plan review by law. It would be much more productive, no one needs to go to court for that, and that is the better solution that we would have to take.
I do have one response to that, is that that, personally, in 20 years, I would never predict what a court's going to do, but there is also an option that the court would remand it back down to this board for conditions that make, that meet the zoning bylaw, that it doesn't just approve it without conditions. In fact, it's almost impossible to have site plan review without conditions, because that's the purpose of site plan review, is to condition a project for the purposes of site plan review.
Could we modify the process, deny the special permit, continue the site plan until the 23rd of April?
You've already closed. You're already closed.
So, you don't have to take a vote on the, on that, on the site plan at this point? We have 98 seconds of decision?
You do.
Okay. May I suggest, and I'm making a motion, you suggest that perhaps we take action on the special permit and defer action on the site plan?
I would just submit a motion that I would move to book, find that the site plan, the site plan submitted does not meet the site plan guidelines in the bylaws. Is that an appropriate finding, I guess, in this instance?
Is that to me? I'm sorry.
That's something for the board to decide, whether that's legally, whether that's, it's a finding, so it's a finding that the board makes. It wouldn't necessarily be a legal finding, but it's what, it's a finding that the board makes.
Would that be a finding the board would vote on to put it on the record, potentially?
Yes, you will be issuing a decision regardless. So, so you will, whether you are voting to allow site plan approval or deny site plan approval, there will be a decision. A decision will be filed with the town clerk.
Question. Question. The town will argue that we do have 98 to approve this, and the state approves it before us, and we trumped on the vote.
I guess I would say discretionary, non-discretionary.
Question, Amy. There's a question that we basically have 98 to approve or not to approve, if the state makes the decision beforehand, is that vote trumping any decisions on this 23rd?
By state, do you mean Attorney General?
No, she, no.
Okay, so we still have to vote. And then...
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, we don't have to wait for her, but if, if the decision comes back with the, if she doesn't approve of the amendment, she doesn't approve the amendment, then it's not, we go back to what was prior to January.
And she approves?
Where we are now.
So, that doesn't trump our vote, still matters on where we look.
So, site plan approval is required no matter what. So, prior to January, site plan approval was required. After January, site plan approval is required. After April, if April, if that article passes, site plan approval is still required. So, we can't get out of it, it's still required.
So, I would make a... I would make a motion to disapprove the site plan as submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to disapprove the site plan as presented.
Is it required for us in that decision to have basis for making that determination and go to the 53rd?
Should I be part of the motion?
Again, what you're doing now is directing the planning director to draft up something for you to vote on.
So, our basis will be in his decision.
So, findings will be made, and then they come back to this board, and that's when this board deliberates on them.
Okay, I still think it might behoove us to wait on action until after the dust settles in terms of what else is happening, and we certainly make it a lot easier for us to deny this site plan in its entirety, where the new amendment that's being proposed was in fact approved, and that being the case, Conservation certainly have a big overshoot. At that place, that port, the site plan approval would be a different appealable issue than without that being in place.
I would somewhat, I would, I would somewhat disagree, because if April passes, if the article passes in April, then they have to come back for a special permit, and that special permit is discretionary. Site plan stays the same.
Okay, that would matter? Site plan approval would really matter?
Any further discussion on the motion to deny the site plan as presented? I'll ask for a roll call only because I guess it's, it's going to be necessary.
So, a yes vote is an...
Yes is, should we do this in the affirmative? Should the motion be...
Deny as presented.
The motion is to deny as presented the site plan. Deny the site plan as presented. Further discussion? Hearing that, I'm going to go to a vote by roll call. Tim?
Aye.
To deny? Warren? To deny? Steve?
Aye, as presented.
To deny? Steve?
Aye, deny as presented.
Frank? Julie?
Aye.
The two will go aye. The site plan has been disapproved as presented by the planning board. What is your pleasure on the special permit for floodplain? Is there a motion or if you want to continue?
Motion to deny the special permit.
Second.
There's been a motion by Steve, I believe a second by Frank, to deny the special permit for floodplain. Discussion.
I don't think we have, I feel that they need the criteria for a floodplain special
Yeah, but frankly, this is, this is an issue I've been struggling with personally as I review this. I won't have my legal opinion, but it's been a struggle, but I feel your pain.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Question to Counsel, you obviously disapproved the site plan... Okay, Mr. Question to counsel, obviously, disapprove the site plan, implications of approving the special permit, the floodplain, is that...
Were they to come back, that would be one less thing for them to need relief on.
That's his question.
Mr. Chairman, they're two separate, they're two separate permits.
Well, I understand, but...
So, there's, there necessarily isn't, particularly the fact that the floodplain special permit is such a narrow permit that I don't see huge implications on the effect of allowing that or denying that on this, you know, based on the site plan. Again, you are correct, it's, if it's granted, it's granted, they don't have to come back if for some reason things change, but I guess there, you know, this is a discretionary, it is a discretionary special permit, so there would have to be some kind of finding as to why it's denied, so that's, would be my...
May I suggest we continue this till after? Without making the motion, I would suggest to the board that we may want to consider this again, at least beyond the conservation, at least having something from conservation, having signed into something on dealing with the floodplain issue, in addition to the extent to which they address any water issues or anything else related to this project, that would give us further ability to dispose of it. My suggestion would be to put this on beyond the 17, at that point, a lot of issues that were otherwise, maybe resolve themselves without having to put ourselves into a gusel.
If this is approved, it's with the stipulation that it complies with conservation, correct?
Yeah.
I would suggest that one of the reasons for disapproval would be that we don't have enough information to satisfy ourselves as to the approval of this special permit, and it would be my position to take that, having them or us to have the closing permit at this point, that would be my position in terms of denying it if they want it.
Just to get a consensus on this board, if conservation comes back within a week or two weeks with nothing, would you still be more comfortable voting then as opposed to now with still no information? A note of conclusion from conservation.
Want to respond?
If you're asking me personally, I don't think I have enough information that I would be comfortable in denying this permit in the absence of the people pushing for a decision at this point, and closing out the area before we did get conservation, I don't have enough information to properly determine this, and therefore, I wonder the reasons I would deny it, given lack of information that I think is necessary.
Okay, just procedurally, so that we're all on the same page, there has been a motion and a second to deny the special permit. There's been discussion that we suggest in the minds of one, the more, that there may be some benefit to continuing, but we have to act on the motion as it's made unless the original motion or a secondary one with drawn a motion, and that motion on the floor is indeed to deny the special permit for floodplain district. Is there any further discussion?
Just clarification, our vote to deny doesn't mean we accept, we approve it, it's just a denial. We'd have to take a different vote to approve it? If we didn't, if we did not, if we...
We're denying the special permit.
If the vote to deny was not passed, we still need another vote to approve?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we ready for the question, and I think the question is, our motion is to deny the special permit in floodplain district. All right, again, by roll call, Tim?
I would not vote to deny the wetland special permit.
Floodplain.
Floodplain, sorry. So I'm not voting to deny.
So you're against the motion to deny?
Correct.
Okay, just so I'm clear.
I vote to deny.
I'm against the motion to deny.
Aye, I'm for the motion.
All right.
Frank?
Yes.
Your motion, favor the motion to deny?
Correct.
Same, favor motion to deny.
I'll vote not, vote against the motion to deny. So what? For to deny, it doesn't matter, we need a vote of super majority. All right, so, motion to deny has... Four people voted to deny. Okay, so, again, it doesn't matter, we have the super majority. You know, we should have done this in the affirmative, in other words, a motion should have been made, my fault, a motion should have been made, even if you wanted to disapprove this, a motion should have been made to approve and then vote against that, because the special permit needs five affirmative votes. Basically, the motion passed, but it didn't pass by five, so rather than further confuse things, let me try to add some clarity. We will, I will accept the motion that is in the affirmative to approve the special permit, in this case, from Exxon in the floodplain district, understanding that if you wanted to deny, you vote against the motion.
So moved.
There's a motion to approve the special permit in the floodplain district from Exxon, is that correct, Tim?
Correct. Second.
And there has been a second. Further discussion? Again, just procedurally, so you know, if you want to see this denied, you vote against the motion, and it needs five in the affirmative. All right, Tim?
Aye.
No.
Aye. No.
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 And I have a vote aye for completely different reasons. So the motion fails, it did not reach the five necessary for a special permit, so the special permit has an effect of denying. And that at least closes this chapter of failing proposals and sentences, maybe other chapters get to be written.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. We still have a little business, a little bit of business to conduct, so if you wouldn't mind either returning to your seats and remaining quiet or going up to the hall if you continue to speak. Are the calls from Blue Star School here? Last I remember, we were looking at the findings and decisions as commented on by both the applicant and counsel, and I believe we got the page four. Paul, there was a comment on prior to construction number nine.
Surety.
Yes. Right, we did. We finished the surety, so we were going to talk about, right, number nine.
So on page, on page five?
Sorry, still on surety? I have a question.
On surety?
Can I suggest that surety determination should be made by the board? I'm not sure what items come up on the surety, this is a major project, this would be major dollars, this is something the board should approve, and usually, the board is the one to release the surety.
We haven't released surety yet.
The release of the surety is done by the board. I think that the issue with having the board weigh in on the surety, and I'm not saying that it's not allowed, is timing. So perhaps, perhaps you could say something like, to be determined by the Director of Planning and Economic Development and ratified by the board at the next hearing, something like that. If not, you, there could be holdups.
Can we, that's a responsibility under the bylaw for us to determine surety, can we delegate that out?
Where is that under, in the bylaw for planning? Is it under the planning?
It's under it. You know, I've seen it.
I mean, the site plan provision allows for a surety. I don't think it specifically states that it has to be voted on by the, a surety is, it's usually a calculation, so what happens is, is that the engineering costs come in, and then Paul can either increase those costs by a certain percentage or go with what the costs are.
We have meetings every other week, I mean, they could present that to us, I think it should be something we should approve, they certainly could present it, make recommendations to us, but I think it should come to us, we're the ones to release it, and we should be the one to establish it. They certainly can bring it, bring it to us, and I hope they work with the applicant to determine what's appropriate, but it certainly should be our call.
Well typically, again, we may have more experience with calculating surety than I do, but historically, surety has been calculated by the peer reviewer, in this case, Horsley and Witten.
Right.
I have no idea, you know, what the road infrastructure, water infrastructure, landscaping is going to amount to. I would rely on that type of information, and it's also generally reviewed by the highway superintendent. I'm fine with having it ratified, but, you know, I've got enough trouble trying to figure out what my infrastructure cost is, let alone something like this. I don't know that we're gonna have this, I don't know that we have the wherewithal internally amongst us to develop a $1 million cost or whatever it would be for surety. I would rely on this case, Horsley, Witten, and Highway Department, and to some extent, Water and Sewer, and Paul, so, and my sense is Paul is going to channel all that information through us, so I'm fine with the way it's written.
Adding the step that we're ratifying the recommendations, is Paul's recommendations are going to come from Highway Superintendent, Water Superintendent, that would be mine?
Certainly, the recommendations are going to be pivotal, but that's a decision we make as to what it should be, whether it's called ratification or whatever, but it is a decision of the board.
Well, the surety is a number, it's a number that comes from Horsley and Witten. So, Horsley and Witten is your peer reviewer, works for you, works for this board, so I'm not really sure how you would, how you would change their number.
Which sets it through it, accept it.
But you have that, but...
That's what we're tasking them with doing.
Yeah, that's why they, that's why they work for you.
We're tasking them to provide the number for us, they work for us.
No, this doesn't say it's for us, this says they make up the decision and it's done. It must be determined by the director to determine the appropriate amount of the surety and enter it into an agreement. Are they gonna answer it, is the director gonna answer the agreement, or that can be approved by the board for the surety?
The surety is, the surety is, the agreement is signed by the board. Now, I guess, what I'm just, I'm looking down the road, if Horsley and Witten says that something costs $50,000, this board can't say it costs 80 unless you're gonna go out and get your own independent, independent cost, but Horsley and Witten is your independent cost.
We approve $300 bills that come before us, we have to approve them. They go by Paul, I'm sure he's getting the right bills, but we approve each one of those bills, and yeah, they can come in, but they had a declassification bill, a decomposition bill, and it had something in it that didn't make sense, we could ask the question saying, is that enough? What did you forget doing something else? That's the prerogative of the board, and that's why it's imperative that we should stay in that process, especially for a project this size. I don't know what's gonna come up, but certainly, we're here, sitting here approving a $50 bill that's issued by, you know, from this committee, why would we not approve and agree something that's gonna be signed?
Because like a bill, and we know, in the case of a $50 bill, that based on what Paul tells us, the item was received and it's within the budget, those are the two pieces of consideration that we have, whether it was money well spent or not, it's not discretionary. The item was received, it's in the budget, that's all the discretion we have. Same with surety. I have no idea what surety should be, as we've discussed, it comes from people who do know what surety should be, and all we do is approve releasing of surety once we are satisfied, either through Paul, the Highway Superintendent, or Horsley, that the item for which the surety was secured has been completed. It's not enough, a lot of discretion, but just to move this along, if you want to make that condition, make the motion, and if there's a second, we'll vote on. Do I make that motion?
Sure. The applicant must meet with the director to develop, develop, develop the appropriate, to determine, to establish an appropriate surety, and with the board approval, with the board approval, and enter, and the board, the board will enter appropriate surety security agreement. I think you said due to unfinished approved items, it's coming out, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So, that's fine, they will meet with the director, they'll come up with recommendations to be approved by, the director will meet with the applicant to come up with recommendations that are to establish a surety which will be approved by the board and entered into a security agreement.
All right, that is a motion, there is a second.
I'll second.
There's been a motion, a second, further, we have further discussion. Every man in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
The two will vote no. All right, next item.
So that was a 5-2.
I don't know that it was a 5-2.
No.
All right, it's a roll call, just so we're aware. The motion was made in affirmative to include, in essence, planning board approval, that's the motion. Tim, yes or no? As to the motion?
As to Orange's motion?
Yes.
I would vote in favor of Orange's motion.
Okay, Orange, yes. Steve?
No.
Steve?
No.
Frank?
No.
Julie?
No.
I two a roll, switch to X two. Okay. There is...
May we move up to item number four on the list?
Item number four?
On that section prior to construction, believing the applicant's recommended conditions that they submitted to us, if that was last week or the week before, regarding the construction hours, the way it's listed here is 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Monday, Monday to Saturday. I would recommend we consider modifying that to a Monday to Friday and a separate schedule for Saturday to coincide with what was presented to us previously by the applicant, so I would recommend changing that to, and I'll, well, I'll make a recommendation at this point. Construction shall be permitted between the hours of 7:00 AM to dusk or 7:00 PM, whichever comes earlier, Monday through Friday, and Saturday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM, with the approval from the Building Commissioner, and then there should be eight. And with the, with approval from the Building Commissioner, comma, the hours may be varied. Right now, that's broken out as a separate sentence, it should be corrected dramatically, so.
Right.
Is that a, why don't you make that as a form, that is a motion, there's a second?
So I will, I will make that as a motion accordingly.
There's been a motion, and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Discussion. Discussion, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I apologize.
Steve, what time on Saturday were you starting?
8:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Eight to four?
Can we let them talk about this?
No, it's...
No longer a public hearing, sir.
All right, there's been a motion, discussion, and it's been discussion, any further discussion? All right, all in favor of a motion as modified? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Just a small change on one, I assume that's agreeable to everyone?
Go prior to final, I can see Joe.
Prior to final, I see a final, approved plan, as opposed to just planned. Next changes are the next page, I see subsurface infiltration systems.
There's one on nine.
Did I miss, I'm sorry, did I miss something?
Number nine, under that section?
That was the surety question.
Nine on the next section.
On page five.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed my guess.
It's just with proper notice, but what's, proper notice? A day, a week, a month?
Mr. Chairman, it would help if we clarified, since we're looking at the applicant's request of changes.
For, yeah, for purposes of just clarifying this point.
I believe that we would like 72 or 70, either two days or three days' notice prior to the, to an inspection, to, to an onsite.
That's point 11.
I'm on, I'm on point nine.
It's actually a different section. This is for observing the construction, not a specific inspection.
It's on page five, number nine.
That's where I am. The issue was with proper notice.
Yeah.
So to advise the applicant that this inspection was going to occur, for liability purposes, and, I'm just clarifying.
Oh, it says it on number one, about 48 hours.
Yeah, yeah. I would, the Building Commissioner wasn't here today to review this, and I would ask that he get a chance to review this, because he's directly, or any future building commissioner is really directly affected by this, and I just don't know how this might affect him. I mean, for example, as a building commissioner, he can go out to any site that has a permit.
Anytime.
Anytime.
I would prefer to...
I'd prefer that, I think it would make sense if, if the Building Commissioner, Carmichael, has a chance to review this. It's been sent to him, but, and he wasn't here today.
Okay.
Can I say something related to that?
We're a little, because the hearing's been closed. All right, on this narrow point, go ahead with Mr. Room.
Our only concern is that they check in with the job trail for security and safety reasons, that's it.
All right, just thinking out loud here, the whole purpose of an inspection is to ensure there's compliance, and I don't think it makes sense to advertise in advance that you're coming and see if you're compliant. But I think, you know, letting someone know that you're onsite and you're gonna be doing whatever you're gonna do, that makes sense, but I, again, I personally don't want to see a 72-hour notice. I think an inspector needs to inspect when he or she, or these other folks, feel there's a need, and not...
Yeah, the Building Commissioner right now can go on any site at any time.
Right.
I don't think we should handcuff him in any way. From a liability perspective, having him go to the job trail, and they can say, yes, you're wearing a hard hat, I think that makes sense. From, from a normal inspection, it may make more sense to have specific people there talking about a specific kind of infiltration, or something like that, where you may want somebody who actually knows how the whole system works for inspection, so, just looking at point 11 below it.
What were the words to the effect, and portrays the words, potential of a site upon notice to the proper...
Supervisor?
Site manager.
The Building Commissioner should be a separate part, that should be a separate line.
Well, it could be, but I think it applies differently. Again, if, if there's a storm event, I don't think that the conservation agent should be, you know, it's raining cats and dogs, I'm gonna be in 72 hours to inspect, but I think what it was, so I think letting someone onsite know, so, with proper notice to the appropriate onsite contact, for, that works.
I'd like to get the Building Commissioner's feedback on this.
Okay.
I'd be more comfortable with his, with his feedback. I don't think that we should put any stipulations on when he can, he can go.
Well, I'm not, there is no stipulation, other than, you know, having him notify that...
They'll know right here what we're talking about, is proper notice, whether it's 48 hours or 72 hours, and this would say that he would have to give them 72 hours' notice.
No, what we're not suggesting is, rather than this insertion of with proper notice, that enter the site upon notifying the, the owner's agent.
But they may not also be there, I mean, that's...
Well, then, there's gotta be somebody that's in charge, and you've got a million-dollar project, or a multimillion-dollar project, I assume it's not left up to the delivery guy to run the place.
Something happens over the weekend, maybe they don't...
I don't see what the concern is on this one, but try to explain.
This had been, this, this language, the original language was written with the Building Commissioner. He was fine with the original supplemental.
Well, the original supplemental was known as...
It just says, yeah, he entered the site, there was just no mention of proper notice. Perhaps it was implied or assumed, but...
We're okay with the original.
The original language?
Thank you.
Make the reading 11?
11, eight, subsection nine.
We were just talking about section nine on page five right now.
What about 11?
We're getting to 10 first.
Right, and again, I'd like to talk to the Building Commissioner about these, deleting of, of part location of excavation is an issue.
You may need to talk to conservation as well.
Correct, right, because she's, conservation agent's listed as well.
Okay. Under 11.
I would just say the same thing, 48, we had put 72 hours in, so...
Well, that's still giving the Building Commissioner...
We're taking out the notification. We're taking out the 72 hours.
I think it's, I think it's two separate processes.
It's, it's two separate.
One's of inspection, and one is the building inspector going on to the site.
Yeah, one's just observations.
Yeah, one's observation.
One's actual inspection.
All right, so we're going to finish up on these items under, on page five, after consult with, and conservation agent. Next, page six, item three, whatever.
Joe, Mark's standing up, the director, December 11.
This, 10...
Again, Mark, we're...
10, eight, one, can we just keep that in? That's all.
I'm sorry?
10, eight, one.
As it was originally?
The excavation one?
Yeah, let's just, since we're waiting on, on the inspectors anyways, let's, let's wait. Page six, the next item is three.
My comment is that that change is, that change is unnecessary, if found, if found liable, if proved and found to be liable, it's just, it's unnecessary. It doesn't matter. That was my only comment.
Are folks okay with leaving that as written, as the letter?
Yes.
And then, on number six, this, this hours of operation, I just wanted to point out that I did, I'm not a member of this board, but I, I wasn't very comfortable with hours of operation are 24 hours, seven days a week. That makes it seem like any operation that goes on there can go on for 24 hours, seven days a week. So you, you would have an all-night convenience store, you would have an all-night Kohl's, you would have all of these things, and I'm not, I don't think that's what is intended.
Agree.
That's true.
So I thought maybe...
Break it up by buildings.
You guys could think about, yeah.
Yeah, my suggestion was buildings one, two, and three, hours of operation, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Again, not knowing what the tenants are, but to put some parameters as opposed to 24 hours, seven days, the warehouse sites are a little different in terms of operation, so that was gonna be my recommendation, to separate, separate out and clearly identify those hours of operation by building, or whatever we determine those to be. But my first suggestion was buildings one, two, and three, 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, buildings four and five, I'm not opposed at this point to the 24/7 operation, we may need just to, if there's clarification, we may need to make out what that operation is.
Do we want to leave an opener? I'm inclined to agree, but a use escapes me at the moment, but if in fact, there was a use that would be innocuous if it ran 24/7 in those front three buildings, if we, my point in leaving an opener language that suggests that it would be a minor modification to special permit to come back to the board and modify those hours in buildings one, two, and three. And I think...
You, you could put it for all buildings, so that, that way, that way, it would be a minor modification if a use changes in any of the buildings. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, if you get like a honeydew donor, it's open at six, I don't know when...
Right.
Or if like a 24-hour urgent care went in.
Yeah.
Right, we'd be limiting, let's say, healthcare service provider potentially. So I think, Joe, that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
And I would do it for all...
Yeah, stating it that way, yeah.
So hours of operation would be seven through 11, seven days a week. Go on with the rest of Riddman's language in there that suggests any desired modification of these hours may be done so as a minor modification, not approval of the planning board. And of course, that effect, like, work with Paul.
And I think those were my only, those were my comments. Yes, and so those comments apply to the, to the next decision, they're exactly the same. So I didn't put them in on the next.
Thank you.
I think you stated, Joe, early on...
I'm sorry?
Stated early, early on in this process, that 24-hours operation's important to these buildings to operate. It may not be on buildings one through three, whatever comes down the road, comes down the road.
This is something they can, they can talk about later.
But if, if something comes up, my sense is unless it's, you know, something that's particularly problematic to the neighborhood, that the board would be amenable to modifying that, but to give a blanket 24/7, not knowing what it is we're talking about, is, is gonna be difficult. So I, again, we'd love the opportunity to expand that on buildings one through five. No.
No, one through, yeah.
One through five.
Any of them, yeah.
Any of them.
Oh, oh, sorry.
And the applicant could proceed with that immediately with whatever buildings they wanted to.
So is it... One through three, second to...
No, it's, the, the, and we didn't put it to vote, but the discussion was that it would be seven to 11, seven days a week, but specific language that would allow for a particular use could be considered by the planning board as a minor modification, so there's no, you know, no adverts from the neighbors, and the butters, and all, all this other stuff, that we could make it a modification.
Oh, I thought buildings four and, four and five would have been 24/7. Is that what it says?
Again, I, I was...
I think that's what we were talking about, yeah.
Again, we didn't vote on it, so I...
I'm sorry.
I'm perfectly amenable to the other...
Steve, is that what you said, or did I misinterpret that?
That was my first suggestion, yes, was buildings one, two, and three, you know, restrict those, condition those to 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM. Yeah, my original intent was not to adjust four and five and leave those 24/7.
24/7.
You know, again, up to everybody here to, yeah.
And then, any change in hours would be a minor modification to the special use permit.
Steve, just sort of, we, we have, can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion to change the language. I'm getting there. Post-occupancy, item number six, to change the hours of operation for buildings one, two, and three, be limited to 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, seven days a week. Buildings four through five, 24 hours, seven days a week, and with the end language that should any, should there be any use changes in either of these buildings, the applicant may request a, a change or expansion of those hours.
Minor.
As a minor modification.
To the special permit.
To the special permit.
Steve, can you add buildings four, five, and seven?
I am not comfortable at all with...
Seven is the thing, but this is not a public hearing any longer.
I'd like to make a point of order.
Yep.
Yeah, the, the public hearing is closed, we're, we're an hour past on our timeline here, we need to make sure that we're...
Moving on.
I second the motion.
And to that point, seven isn't even part of this discussion.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, there's been a motion, and a second, a discussion. Bring them all in favor of the motion, as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Close.
And do we need to separately motion to add this to seven, or...
Well, seven's a whole different special permit.
We're gonna carry everything over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is there anything else that's changed on this?
No.
So we're, the only unfinished item on this is the inspection protocol.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I had submitted to the board...
I'm sorry, yes.
A list of items I had relative to these findings, in addition to additional conditions I had suggested.
Yeah, are they heard, I mean, I've got the email, but do we have them?
Yes.
Yes.
You all have them.
Okay. Can I walk, is I able to walk through them, or has anybody read them?
I've read them, I just, they have the final, I'm sorry, Paul.
As a starting point, I'd like to suggest to the board that under the NEPA process, there were, there were several different tables that established mitigation that the applicant had agreed to, and it was approved by NEPA. I've given you copies of those. I'm not sure, some of those may no longer be applicable, and I'm happy to maybe let the, you know, applicants go through it with us, or at some point, to acknowledge, but still, but still, in fact, and it's, oh, anyway, those, that's what NEPA provided, they provided significant modifications in terms of mitigation for parking, and then there's for environmental. These are areas, again, one of the things that I, that I mentioned, is my understanding that you must find specific details in addressing each of the criteria. The findings that we presented, they conclude, they state what's required, and they just say everything's been found. I think we have a affirmative duty to find specific details to do that. I think in absence of a lot of the information that's contained in the NEPA filing, we can rely at least to some degree on their suggested mitigation. And I don't know that it's, none of it is outside the scope of really what's, what's been, what's been agreed to, but it certainly needs to be in our, in our decision. And I've set forth copies of all of the things that were summarized in NEPA. Beyond that, I had some comments on dealing with what's in the proposed findings, beyond what you guys have discussed, in addition to some additional conditions and findings of fact, and how they go through this, do you?
As it pertains to NEPA, just, those are the, the sections 8.4, 8.5, and 4.6 of those.
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to put in the decision that incorporated, attached here to and incorporated by reference are the MIPA findings? Is that going to work for you?
The findings and conditions, which we adopt as conditions to the...
Well, again, if we attach the MIPA conditions to the special permit, and in here put somewhere, say, attached here to and incorporated by reference to the special permit are, and then cite the document.
Right.
Is there going to comply with them for MIPA anyway?
Well, MIPA provides that information to us and to the population. They require, they only relate to agencies where they have to go back, no, it's when they have to go for a permit from Department of the Mass DOT for a highway permit, there's a specific findings of facts that they put forth that will require them to comply with to get their permit. For all the rest of it is incorporated, it's not, the MIPA by itself is not a required condition, it should be adopted into our position, ideally, as a condition to our permit. These are their recommendations, and these were basically negotiated during the MIPA process.
With all due respect, it's a completely separate set of requirements that are not under your jurisdiction. Yes, we have to meet all those things, but we don't believe it's appropriate to include them in the site plan and special permit approvals.
All right, just to move this along, Warren, make a motion.
I move that we include by reference, incorporate and include by reference the various provisions filed in the MIPA final EIR, we can cite the sections, I don't have them, be incorporated by reference and made conditions of the permit.
Is there a second? I'm giving a second for motion fair. All right, other items?
Let me go through this then, this is the, I'd like to know the details of the findings.
Again, you want to know the time for that was for here, specifically what is you want to put in the condition?
I want a decision to have findings of fact that substantiate the decisions.
Okay.
You can't just cite the requirements and say, we've decided all the conditions that they have to have happen. I'd like to see a list of all the exhibits that included the documents under Article eight, there's some comments. I believe the proper procedure is to have a list of comments that have been submitted by the public.
Now, that's not, that's not part of the special, the conditions, if there's finding conditions, not the comments submitted by the public. If in fact there are specific conditions, you know, move to put them in, we'll discuss them, but just make references as part of the special permit that we attach, conditions that have been made by the public.
No, that's not what I'm saying.
All right.
If you look at item eight, you say the same.
Item eight, item eight of what?
Are the findings of decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Item eight?
The site plan.
Page one, okay.
Page one.
Right. Are a result of planning board and town departments' comments to provide a better overall site plan and specific and special permits. It's my understanding that the, in referencing the findings of a special permit, you should include all exhibits, documents, and materials submitted prior to the proposed hearing.
I've never seen that done, but my experience has led me to...
We've typically done this as part of the notice of decision that the planning director will send to the town clerk, and it includes all the, you know, items for attachment, including special permit application, site plan application. I mean, that's how we've done it for the last number of years. It's separate, it's a separate document from the decision, but the decision gets attached to the notice of decision.
Okay. The next thing is my understanding that the decision must include specific detailed findings of facts that address all the applicable decision criteria. That was presented in the writing, reasonable and defensible decisions, that was presented by Carolyn Murphy of KP Law. That was in the present, that's what they presented at the conference. So you guys want to ignore that, and you can't come up with the same, basically, for the reasons stated above, and you didn't state any reasons. All you did was restate the criteria. What are the reasons for the decision? There are none stated. Item 11, just for reference, they're talking, you mentioned there's a waiver for common driveway widths, it was not for common driveway widths, it was for driveway widths. They didn't approve, in the spec, DPA, they didn't approve common driveways.
No, we did.
Pardon?
We...
No, we didn't.
We... It was the driveway, so that's a simple fix.
Okay. Again, in number five, the reasons stated above, no reasons have been provided. Special permit criteria, again, you can't grant a special permit unless the petitioner's application material includes, in the opinion, sufficient detail, definite and credible information to support positive findings in relationship with standard sections. The section stated above, we haven't, we haven't, we really don't have conservation commissions to rely on what they're providing. We're now also not even including MIPA's findings. What findings do we have in dealing with this environment?
Do we have nokins here?
This is a question.
One thing to just clear up is that in site plan review, there is a provision that the departments are, the departments are to set up a routine manner in which they circulate the application, meaning the application comes in, it gets circulated to town departments, the conservation agent has comments, the building commissioner has comments, sometimes even the assessors or tax collectors, you know, says there's no bad and paid, or they have paid, whatever it may be. It's not the conservation commission, they do not make those comments, it's the conservation agent, it's staff, it's at a staff level.
We had the initial comments from the staff level, I don't believe this board has received any further comments from the staff level, in dealing with the issues that we have to address.
But the conservation commission has its own area of jurisdiction, they have their own ability to approve or disapprove, I'm not going to give a second guess or carry water for, no, kind of intended that the conservation commission, as a member. They have certainly an opportunity to reflect whatever concerns they have in their order of conditions, and I'm not going to personally wait for them to do whatever it is that they think they need to do. We've closed the hearing, and if we've closed the hearing, whatever comments that may wait in the bench from the conservation commission should be rejected out of hand because they weren't here before the conservation, before we closed the hearing. So unless there's a specific item, and I hear what you're saying about findings, and we reiterated some of the criteria for approval, and again, if there are specific findings that you feel should be put in here, by all means make a motion, let's rather than be critical of the document, let's try to proactively move this along.
I have, is that the sound? Let me go to the standard, the standard conditions of approval. In item number...
I'm sorry, this is all, I'm kind of following.
I'm going to, I'm just going down this list.
The list that you provided.
Which list?
I'm sorry.
We've got pages of...
Okay.
Okay, that one more, all right.
Just, just point of order, are we, do we, does this have all to be resolved tonight? I mean, we could be here till midnight or one in the morning, I mean.
I mean, I don't think we have, we have a timeline here to... Does the discussion lead to motions of changes? Or are we just, does the discussion lead to motions for changes, or is this just discussion on the...
No, there's going to have to be a motion to include these, and I'm just trying to get a sense of what it is that we're going to include, or...
We all received this, and we've all gone through it, so I mean, I don't think it's productive by any means to just go line by line on these unless there's motions for them.
Well, again, I'm open to a motion to include anything and everything, and we'll act on that motion, but right now there is no motion, we have a list, what's your pleasure?
Okay. Item number three, the standard conditions of approval. Because we're two-year period...
I'm sorry, I'm...
Where is this in the document?
In which document?
Not your document, the actual document, the findings and decision document, where are you referencing?
Item number three, the standard conditions of approval.
Page one.
Page three.
Okay. Item three?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Right. It talks about substantial construction commencement within two years of a site plan and special permit approval. Do we have a timetable for, is that per individual lot, is for one project? They start the project within two years for one building?
The whole project is subject to one special permit, so my thought is this applies to each and every building, so if the last building isn't done within two years, you no longer have a site plan and special permit approval. Is that...
No, this is estimates.
I'm sorry.
So they build building five, and they don't do anything else after two years, at some point can we say, okay, guys, we've got to do something with that property, or this permit no longer be in good...
Yeah, but I mean, their special permit's good for two years, under law.
There's case law that covers that, there's case law that says that if there's a long enough disruption, then, there's case law that says that the work has to be continuous unless there's good reasons such as appeals or something like that.
So there's no outside date of completion, they just want to have to start?
Correct. And particularly on a project such as this, you would, you could never predict a completion date, the applicant would just keep coming back for extension after extension, so...
But as she said, there's case law that says it needs to be continuous, so it can't be, we start a construction on five buildings on day one, and we didn't do anything for two years, which they wouldn't do anyway because they want to build the buildings, at least the buildings, so...
However, I'm sorry, each building will require a building permit, that building permit has a life...
Correct.
I forget what that is, a year or two?
It's a year, and I think it can be extended for six.
So there's a requirement in terms of commencement, under the special permit, that it has to commence within two years, which implies the seeking of a building permit, that building permit has a life expectancy of a year, so that outside length of this is three years unless they're extending it.
Exactly. We also have conservation where it's good for only three years, start, you know, it's good for three years no matter what, so there's all kinds of limitations.
Okay. Number four, I'm fine with the insubstantial, but you have, this is just having approved by the director of the building, or the building commissioner, necessary deviations from the approved site plan. It doesn't reference insubstantial. I would suggest that be, I would move to delete cap provision. So if it's insubstantial, the building inspector can do it, if it's substantial, the board has to do it, but necessary deviations from the approved site plan should not be discretionary on the planning board, the director and the commissioner.
This is just saying that there's minor, very insignificant...
Just take out necessary, because it doesn't matter, a deviation is a deviation.
Take out...
Just take out or necessary.
Or necessary deviation, okay.
I'll take out the deviation, just...
Not just necessary.
Or necessary, yeah.
Okay. And again, if that is not in agreement with board, so I'm going to pipe up, but...
Need a motion, is that fine?
No, I'll be there, bro.
Okay. Item six, it's binding, the, they've set up stormwater facilities that transcend each individual lot, they also have parking, cross-parking agreements. My understanding, they need to establish those, they have to create easements and restrictions, agreement should be in place. They own the property now, it's clear they're going to be selling off retail sections, we should be the ones that control the fact that they have to have, we have to see how they're, how they're going to monitor, who's going to be taking care of the stormwater if it's not on their site. They've located stormwater facilities off their site, with your understanding that there's going to be an agreement, that someone's going to be responsible for paying for that and maintaining it. I think that's part of our decision, we should see an agreement to reflect that, and it should be something that gets reported with the permit, including cross-easements, you pardon?
The owner plan is going to be submitted with conservation.
Right.
There's an operations maintenance plan which will be required by conservation.
Well, this is separate and apart from that. It's operating, they don't have, they need to have a document, a restriction that runs with the land. They typically do it for one site, they have a site that you own the lot, your stormwater's on that site, you put, you have an agreement to maintain and support that property. This is, it's a multiple site, my understanding is the stormwater facilities are located off of some lots, and they service other properties.
Well, I mean, within the, within their boundaries, but separate lots.
Within all the lots, yeah.
Different lots, but within this overall unified development, correct?
Is the development owned by one owner?
Current.
Current.
Then you can't do it until sale, because, and you can't give yourself an easement. You cannot give yourself an easement, it merges.
I don't believe that's the case. The project requires significant water, this is number seven. The project is, there's got to be, we don't know the status of the agreement with the water and sewer department, there should be a memorandum of agreement.
It hasn't been more than a year.
How can you prove that, how can...
Then they won't connect.
So it's got to be...
Or there's certain things you have to take as a matter, of course.
It's got to be a condition of the permit.
It says so.
No, it's not.
Our connections in New Orleans shall be subject to private public works as well as water and sewer.
And prior to final occupancy, we have a condition in there that says they have to connect.
And they're not going to get, if they don't have sewer, they're not going to get a building permit.
A search of the occupancy.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
There is water there now, there is sewer there.
Prior occupancy, there's this line right here.
Yeah, it says what?
The installation, sewer line compensation, water, I'm afraid, must be approved, basically, prior to occupancy.
We should know, we should have, in the past, we've had comprehensive permits. In addition to those comprehensive permits, your firm basically required as a condition to that permit, that there was a memorandum of agreement and a memorandum, and a order of conditions was wrapped into that agreement.
That's because a comprehensive permit is a comprehensive permit, meaning the zoning board of appeals issues every single permit, so the zoning board of appeals was issuing every local permit in a comprehensive permit. This is not, this is a special permit in the site plan, they're different, it's different. There are, there are limitations to the planning board's jurisdiction.
And we referenced that they in fact will complete water and sewer connections per private public works or water and sewer, or whatever they're called.
There should be a memorandum of agreement with the water and sewer commissioner, that's a, that's a, that's a decision.
Again, I just want to make that a motion.
Number eight, I'll move on. Number eight, now, I thought we talked about this, that there will be a conservation order of conditions, and we're going to incorporate that into our final law, that's a compliance of it?
That's what we, again, we did not agree, this states it's going to be incorporated by reference. I'm not sure what the issue is.
Mr. Chairman, would the chair entertain a motion to table this? I think that this list needs to be gone over by...
Yeah, I mean, I was hoping...
Town council, so we can narrow it down and get some actual motions instead of...
Yeah, I was hoping, I've got another five minutes, but again, whatever motion you want to make.
I'd like to move to table this, with the stipulation that this be reviewed by Paul and town council where needed, so we can move this along, and we can update this to include the changes you've already agreed to.
Second.
There's been a motion and second, over discussion. And then all favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close, if unanimous, is there another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
You have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.